My absent mindedness, we're gonna have to scratch item five because I didn't print the town manager's contract, but we do have it settled, right? Oh, come on. You said it was okay.
Handshake.
Yes.
We just need, we just need to sign it.
Yeah.
Anyway, I didn't print it out, I'm sorry. So we need to scratch that, but we're gonna backfill with?
We have another item five. Can the board authorize me to sign a letter of support for a capital investment program grant for CAE? For their contribution, for their fund contribution to the yellow barn? So.
Yeah.
I know that was kind of a mouthful.
Yeah, got it.
What did it mean?
It means another.
CAE is applying for a capital investment grant for funds to put into the yellow barn.
And we just, so we'll talk about it?
Just a letter of support, yeah.
Okay, got it. Anything else? So could we have a motion to amend the agenda as discussed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kaylee?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, next is communication from the audience. Uh, we're a little.
No audience.
Thin on the audience department tonight.
If they knew we had these microphones, I'd be.
They would be here, somebody would be here. Maybe they'll come later.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, next is select board to approve minutes from the last regular select board meeting August 4th, and also special meeting of August 9th. I'd like to do these separately if we could. Because I would like to call. I have a, I'd love it if we could just have a, I just noticed a slight thing in the August 4th minutes in the select board reports, it says Danny reported that VAST has been working on Hardwick Woodbury Rail Trail. I'm pretty sure that should be VASSA. And since he's not here, I was gonna actually ask him, I was gonna wait and use it as a test to see if he'd read the minutes, but he's not here, so we can't do that.
I move we adopt the minutes as amended?
No, it's not.
Second. As amended, as changed.
As changed from VAST to VASSA.
As edited.
Edited, thank you. Uh, any other comments or updates on those minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, and how about the minutes from the special meeting on August 9th?
I move we adopt the meetings, the minutes from August 9th meeting. Shouldn't be that hard.
Second.
Alright. Any, anything to change on those? All good? They're very short. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries, those minutes next. Town managers report, you have Mr. David Upson, you're on.
Okay, um, the town will be applying, Tracy Martin, our new CDC, will be applying for a bylaw modernization grant in the amount of, the maxima is 25,000 to potentially add a neighborhood development area overlay to some of our town zoning districts. This project will create solutions to the, some solutions to the current housing problems we are faced with by exploring some, exploring some of the current setbacks, parking rules and density requirements in our zoning districts. There's a 20% match to the grant. Not a case.
Cash match.
Cash, yeah.
And as a designated downtown, once we're, once we're that officially, it also adds to the, right? It adds some of the area that we can include in this neighborhood development. It adds a little bit more.
It, it provides incentives to homeowners and contractors to be able to do work in this overlay. Um, so it's, it's all around, it's, it's, everybody's gotta do their part for the, this housing crisis that we're in. And this is a step to be able to provide more houses, housing in areas where we can fit it.
Yep.
And then with this grant, we'll open up our town plan and add some, add and subtract some stuff in the town plan, kind of bringing things up to date. So, the, the plan is to hire a consultant to do this.
That was my question, who actually does the work?
So we're not relying on MBDA.
Who do you have to do it in conjunction with them to some degree, I think, right?
They have to agree.
Yeah.
With our, with the town plan, yeah.
Yep.
So.
But this is through ACCD?
Right.
Yeah.
Great.
Starting on August 26th, the state of Vermont Department of Liquor and Lottery will be forwarding all applications for tobacco and tobacco substitute endorsement licenses to local governing bodies for approval.
So in addition to approving liquor licenses?
Yeah.
We're gonna do tobacco?
Mm-hmm.
And cannabis.
And then, and cannabis.
Right.
So, um, this is my next question with our resolution that we're gonna discuss tonight. Should we transfer the approval of alcohol, tobacco and cannabis licenses to our newly formed commission? And we do maybe like a substance, um, some, some sort of substance control board? We would be, I talked to Allison Link from Healthy LaMoe Valley, and she, we, we kinda hashed, we kinda came up with the idea during our conversation, we'd be the first town in the state to do something like that, where all these licenses would come in front of a citizen advisory board, and they would approve. Otherwise, well, you can read the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
But that's for, for the cannabis control commission, um, we would have an independent, it wouldn't be the select board, it would be a commission of folks, stakeholders. So we could potentially lump this all in.
How is the commission constituted? Does the select board appoint members, are they elected?
That's, we can go over that resolution.
Resolution.
But they are appointed by the select board, yeah. And then SE group will be coming for a site visit the first week of September for the pedestrian bridge. They plan to have a stakeholder meeting at the end of September and a public meeting shortly thereafter to unveil two bridge designs.
Ooh.
So they're gonna.
So they've been working on it?
They're, yep, they're, they've done a lot of the legwork.
When do I get to talk to them?
You're a stakeholder.
You're a stakeholder. Probably.
I have an idea.
Yeah? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can talk to them anytime.
Okay.
But I would say the beginning of September.
Okay.
Yeah. They're just wrapping up some other projects, so they're gonna go full force on ours when.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they have engineering?
They have Engineering Ventures working with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
Yeah.
Bob, Bob Neale.
That was the way of that continuity.
Yeah, they have to do the bridge abutment, they have to do, they've done a preliminary on the bridge abutments and they need to do a little bit more work on that.
To assess?
Yeah. And that's gonna be a big, that's a big question right now if we can reuse those.
Yeah.
And if we can't, it's gonna add to the cost of the project considerably. The Hardwick Plan and Commission had their first public hearing on the proposed bylaw changes. They will be forwarded to you guys, and they're requesting a board, the board to schedule a public hearing on September 15th before a regular meeting. So, just a public hearing on the bylaw changes.
So, sure.
Kristin asked me to put this in my report, so.
Can, yeah, that's good, right?
She sent in her email that it needs to be at least a month from today.
Oh.
She said September 15th.
When she met you?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, that's our next, that's our second meeting in September.
I think it has to be a month from when we had the first one, which was last Tuesday.
Yeah. A month from the last one, yeah. She, she gave me the September 15th date, so.
So that's good, right?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and schedule that.
And put on the next one.
So it's like 5:30, or five?
5:30.
5:30 is probably good, yeah.
Yep. And that's all I got until we get further down.
Did, um, did we receive those bylaw changes?
There.
The proposed?
We have them, I just didn't put them in this folder.
No.
I just got, it was too late.
I put them in the Google folder.
You did?
Yep.
Oh, alright.
For this meeting?
I missed.
For this meeting, just for them to see.
Okay.
But it will, you guys can.
When did you do that?
So we can go back this afternoon?
This afternoon, early afternoon.
Sorry. Last I looked was noon time.
Yeah.
It was after that.
Yeah.
So, but we couldn't find them there.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I'll stick them in the next folder as well.
Awesome.
On the planning commission, we've already seen them many times.
Yes.
Yeah.
You haven't seen them though.
Yeah.
Alright, awesome, thank you. That was it, right?
That was it.
Okay. Just checking. Tom Fadden, you're next, tell us about the roads.
Oh, actually they're still in pretty good shape. We ended up regrading the Bridgeman Hill area the other day. Last week, we were over to Cape Brook Road. We hauled a bunch of stay mad over there to fix some of the problem areas that we had this spring. So we built that area and regraded that road, so that road should be pretty good for this winter. Crushing still isn't here yet. Last word on that was the crusher was in Maine, supposed to be leaving there next week. Then it goes to Albany for two weeks and then to us. So that pushes into September sometime.
Wow.
But that's fine.
That's not super used well.
No, but we'll go, we'll go all out once it starts going.
Yeah, I guess.
We'll start putting right to it, so, but.
Okay.
Bailey Hazen.
What about it?
Finished that?
Well, of course we did.
Oh, were you gonna bring that up?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
You're jumping the gun. Yes, Bailey Hazen Road is done, it's restrained now, and I'd really like to thank Larry Hamo on this one. He saved, saved the town more or less fuel costs and everything. He allowed us to stockpile the material that we actually dug out of the road up to his house, so we could re-put it back in the old road there and redo it around the corner and block it off and stuff, so I appreciate that, that, that saved us a lot of time. But that road's done, it's, it's been open now for, I think, a week now. So, we stay matted it up, up through, she still has a time there, she's gonna have to settle down a little bit. We'll get back up there and grade it off again. Now you lost some train of thoughts.
Sorry.
Had sewer, sewer issue up in Hideaway, water issue down on South Main, they've had to take care of. Excavator, that's starting to act up quite a bit more now. She's starting to lose power and spitting sputter and stuff. Do got pricing on new equipment that's supposed to come up for next year from John Deere. It just ballpark, there's like, they said they put all the bells and whistles in it before we even sat down saying, okay, well, no, we don't need this and this and that. Excavator for the same size we got, or just a hair smaller, was around 130. New grader, this one's really gonna get you 380 to 386. New loader was 264.
Wow, and what do we have in our budget for those?
Well, we have 125 right now for an next excavator.
So that's close.
Yeah, and then the grader and loader, we usually do lease to buy for 10 years. So Casey has it right now, I think, 55 in there per year for the next 10 years. So I think come budget time, we might have to jump that up, because I don't know what interest would be and stuff like that, but we're looking at probably, I would say probably around 65, 66,000 a year instead of 55, so probably about another 10,000 increase on that. But like I said, those are just preliminary, you know, like she said. She put heated mirrors and this and that, I said, look, I said, our grader now don't have mirrors on it for a reason. So there's stuff that we can chew down from that stuff and keep knocking the price down. So, uh, those are just preliminary fingers, figures. But equipment is six plus months out before you will get a new piece, so.
And are all those scheduled for?
Next year.
So after next July?
Yeah.
But is the excavator gonna make it?
I don't know.
The, the grader will make it.
The grader will make it, the loader will make it. Excavator, that's gonna be a question.
And those will both have value, do we trade them?
Oh, yeah, every, everything will get traded.
Even the.
Yeah, even the excavator, even if they give us, you know, 10 grand for our five or whatever, it's. It is, it's, it's tired.
We should order that excavator right now.
We've, we've had that machine.
Sounds like.
I think we've had that machine now for over 20 some odd years.
Really?
Yeah. So it's, it's earned its keep, so it's done a lot of work.
It sounds like though that's the one to figure out, and if it has to happen a year ahead of schedule, if there's money.
Well, right now, we, we have, we, we have money in there right now because the one ton, we couldn't get a one ton this year, so there's 95 in there for that, for replacement, but as you know, we can't, I don't even know when they're gonna order or, or be able to order a new F-550 yet. We keep checking with, with them, they're saying the end of September, they might open it back up for ordering and stuff like that, so we're.
Okay. But it sounds like the excavator is the thing that really is.
Yeah, but that's still there though, Eric, I mean, we won't, I mean, even if we decide to get it, I mean, six months from now, it's gonna be middle of the winter before we get it anyways. So, but, it is what it is.
You don't use it that much in the winter anyway, do you?
No, I think it just sits there, so.
Yeah. But it'd be nice to have it for the spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's another story.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's it.
Do we have to throw up the old section of Bailey Hazen Road?
If we did, we already did.
Didn't we already do that?
Did we? Even though we were still using it until?
Because we got it all blocked off now with big rocks and stuff and get it all seeded and.
I just wondered from.
In terms of giving it up?
In, in terms of giving up that.
Legally giving.
Yes, in terms of legally giving up that right away. I know we legally laid out the new road, but I guess I don't remember.
Is that what we did when we went over there? We laid it out?
That was part of the laying it out.
It was just a public hearing.
Yeah, we had to do it on, we had to do a site visit.
I'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
I did talk to the McGowan, I think it was McGowan, that lives right there.
Yeah.
It would be his property.
Yeah.
He called in the spring, asking when we'd be starting the project, so I'll follow up with him and.
I mean, just because it's gonna be a problem on somebody's.
Yeah.
Deep going forward if we don't do everything now.
In 2075.
Right, and when we're all not here and wondering why. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mike Henry, you're next, tell us about the police department.
Oh, police department. So, we've had a couple guys out last week, so it's been a little bit thin, but, uh, body cameras, we ordered back in June, we got a grant for that, had a little bit of problems with them. It's mainly the, the sales rep just dropped the ball big time. So, working on that, trying to get those out and going again. Lost the paperwork, but then in one of his responses, sent back the paperwork that I had emailed to him before in June.
He hadn't lost them?
He hadn't lost it, it's like, right there in the cha, the chain, but. So, yeah, we, we got four of those body cams and, uh, so hopefully those will be coming in the next month. We needed them in July. I've got a copy of our policies, I got that all set up on, we have that, I think I talked about the police one that we use for training, everything is uploaded that, I have all the policies done. I actually have a copy on a thumb drive for you guys to, if you wanna go through it, look at it. But we should be all good with that right now, so. Seems to be working, the platform is actually free for us the way we're using it. We use it for training, we spend, I think it costs us $500, but there's trainings we can use and then, um, what it's for is I can, I assign a policy, somebody reviews it, they sign off on it, we're good. So that's all up and running.
So that means all the policies are digital now and they're up to date? And when you, and you can show that officers have, it, it.
Have reviewed them, yeah.
Signing off on reviewing them?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll just, you know, once a month, take one policy. You know, the use of force policy alone is 37 pages long, so, uh, sign a policy to read and, um, then they can sign off on it.
Great.
So the other thing is, thanks to Tom Fadden and crew, we have the solar sign up down here for speed.
Where?
I used it.
For those of us who don't get out much, where is it?
Yes, we, we did find somebody going through it a little too fast.
Oh.
I think Goby was going through it 27 through there.
Yeah, oh.
27.
Yeah.
Shut them down.
So we, we decided to put it between Buffalo Market and Hayes, right in that section.
Really?
Yep, we were gonna put it out.
I haven't been through there, I guess.
It just got put up today.
Oh, I saw your trucks down there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
So, it was very, very heavy.
Oh, it's very heavy?
Oh, yeah.
Does it tell people in both directions, or is it?
Just, just one direction.
People coming in from the east?
Yeah.
We don't care too much about the ones leaving.
Yeah.
Depends how fast they're leaving.
Oh.
The faster the better.
Yeah.
Bite your tongue.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So that's cool.
So that's up and running, the other, the other signs, we're just gonna place around and if, you know, uh, the public wants us to place those in certain areas, we can do that with those other two signs, the only drawback to those is, you know, the batteries. There's two big, large batteries in there and they, it doesn't seem like they last very long, but they take forever to charge and you can't, um, you can't just go on one battery. You need both batteries in there for the thing to operate, so that's why they're down quite a bit.
And we don't have a third battery?
Well, it takes two batteries.
Right.
To run them.
So we don't have an extra backup?
Right, a third, yeah, no, and they're.
Are they older batteries?
No, they're not older batteries, they're just, they're just two and a quarter each battery, so it's not worth getting another set. We'll just charge them.
Yeah.
They'll be down every once in a while.
And I think we're.
Do those, do those, like, do those provide us with traffic data as well? Like, do they give you a report on what speeding?
I don't know the answer to that, I can find that out.
I know the portable ones do, I'm not sure about the solar one.
Yeah.
What's that doing?
Isn't, in the past, I think we've used those portable ones to kinda tell where, like, where we might need to have more of a presence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, from what I was reading on that solar one today, it will do.
Data log.
Data logging and stuff, but there, there's a, I think, when I was reading about that, there's a one-time fee that you gotta pay.
We might already.
To get more stuff. Oh, yeah, there's always a catch to something.
And I, I know our plan is to purchase one, maybe two more of those.
Which?
The, the permanent ones.
Okay.
The solar powered ones in the near future. I.
For each target, they will get one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that this location is gonna be better in the wintertime because I don't think that it would've gotten enough sun to charge in the wintertime.
Oh, where it was?
Around the corner.
Yeah. It is shady in there, yeah.
Right. So I think this is perfect, I like it, I came right around, as soon as I hit the crest of the corner, gave me my reading.
Okay, great.
And it flashed.
Great.
And at that point, you're in the 25 zone.
Right.
Whereas before, we were just prior.
Right.
And it said thank you to me.
Oh.
It's cause you're town manager.
Cause it was, cause I was going slow, I wasn't speeding.
So, that's good.
Then can I ask a question?
Yes. Can you state your name, please?
I'm Margaret Day River, I live in the, in by the river.
Yeah, okay.
I moved up here a year and a half ago from Maine, Orland, Maine, because my eyesight's going, so I can't see your faces very well, you're incognito. And so I'm here tonight just because I wanna educate myself about what's going on in the community. Now, in regards to the police thing, I'm really interested in your conversation about that because we had a similar issue in Orland, it's a small town. And I was on the committee to address this, and we finally got the state to put in these thing, meters or, that would show, you know, give you feedback on your speed. But then when the battery went out, do you have the same problem? If you need two batteries, uh, they're down while you're trying to recharge it. And as you say, it's a slow recharge, isn't it? So what do you do during that period of time? That's why I think you need an extra battery or something.
That's why we went with a solar charging one this time, so the one we're talking about, the new one that we just purchased has a, is, should be recharging every time the sun shines. So it shouldn't need to be down for recharging.
Okay, well, we had one that was solar and it fin, finally gave out.
Yeah, I'm sure it will at some point.
And then people thought, oh, they're not moderating, monitoring anymore, so I can just go through here like I used to. Anyway, that's just a thought. The other issue I have is that, is there a noise ordinance here? I'm astounded at the amount of noise that deliberately is pounded on my ears coming through either direction on the roads. And it's not just bad exhaust system, it's deliberate. Surely you've noticed it, or maybe your hearing's gone, so you don't hear it anymore, but.
I just tuned it out.
What?
No, I, so, there are a lot of, there's, there's a statue after 10 o'clock, there's noise in the nighttime, but the, the traffic with the, you're, you're talking about the exhaust?
Ah, yes.
Like the loud exhaust?
It's not, it's not just accidentally.
No, people put the aftermarket exhaust in their cars and race up and down the roads and let off their gas and it goes pop, 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 pop. We, we can't really control what people put in their cars. And we, we wish, you know, that we could, we can write tickets for defective equipment.
Yeah.
But it, it's not gonna make them go home and change their exhaust. So it's, I, I hear you, I understand what you're saying, but that's, that's.
Oh, I, I don't understand that.
I don't either.
Because we have noise ordinances on our roads in Maine.
Right.
And this does not happen, I move up here and all of a sudden, it's astounding.
Yeah. That's a busy road where you.
Oh, doesn't, doesn't matter, I mean, we have busy roads too, but nothing, nothing like that, that's deliberate.
Oh, yeah.
And so there must be some kind of, is it a state law or something, or where, or what level is it? You know, county, whatever. I mean, I'd like to see that.
We don't really have county laws in Vermont.
It's a little different, the, the governments, the way the government's set up in Vermont is very different from the Maine, the way local governments and county governments are set up in Maine. very different from the Maine, the way local governments and county governments are set up in Maine.
Well, that shouldn't, eh, eh, disenable people.
No, no, there's still statute, there's state statutes that can be followed for
Well, just advise me, who could I address this to? Because this should not be going on.
So
How, how do people accept it?
I'd like to propose, so this is, um, definitely value you coming and offering your input, but primarily, this is a meeting of the select board tonight. And so I, I think it would be more appropriate if you could, um, come into the town manager's office during their regular business hours and
Good, I'll do that.
Is that good? Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Can you just make sure you sign in before you leave, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right here.
It's, it's primarily just traffic noises, ma'am?
No, it's not traffic noises. It's way above.
But vehicles.
Yes.
Vehicles making a noise.
Oh, it's vehicles is making it. It's not just ordinary traffic.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, it'd be great if you could come in and follow up.
It happens up on Highland Avenue all the time, too. Just saying.
Yeah, it happens. I can hear it from my house.
Those people do that.
One that moves across the road from me.
It's the two-step exhaust. They, they program their cars so it sounds loud and they let off and it does the pop. I, I, I don't know why people spend their time and money on things like that.
But they do.
But they do. You can quote me on that.
Mike, do you have more?
I do not.
Okay.
He's taking
He took, he stole your
Right there. Prime example.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry.
All right. So you're right. I mean, we just heard one, so you're, you're totally right. All right, I'm gonna move us, the next is, um, Hartwick Electric Department Report given by Lynn Gedanken, who I don't see anywhere, so we're gonna thank goodness.
By five minutes.
Well, yeah. All right, so we're gonna roll. Um, item one, select board to discuss and approve bids for brush clearing in town highway road sides. Were the, were the two bids in our folder the only two bids?
Yeah.
So
I've got a breakdown of that and I can explain it all.
Okay, cause, okay.
Yeah. You want me to do that now?
Well, I'll, how about I'll give you my, uh, questions, which are somewhat fueled by a call from Danny Hale earlier, who isn't here, but so the first, um, there is one bid for, um, that's, uh, for basically cutting by hand.
Yeah, like a normal line crew.
Right.
Chainsaws on the side of the road.
Yeah.
It's fifteen hundred dollars a day, plus we would have to pay for flaggers.
Yeah.
Tom quoted me a price of about a thousand bucks a day for flaggers.
Right.
So we figure with, um, with Michael's, we're looking at about eight days of cutting.
Is all we would have time for, or all we would have money for.
Money for.
And it probably wouldn't get us a lot of mileage
Correct.
on roads because it's slow-going. What we, I thought what we were after was somebody with like a flail mower on the side of a tractor to get us back in shape.
That brings us to Bellavance. Uh, their flail mower is a thousand dollars a day and, um, I talked to Kyle today and he gave me the estimate of like one point five miles a day. I think they could do more. But he's talking about bringing both excavators, the flail mower and the brono head. So that would be about five days of clearing if he brought both machines.
So why do we want an excavator crawling down the roads?
Well, that's what they have, the, the, both of the, the heads.
I know, but people have those on tractors too. I mean, the state contracts people with tractors to do that.
These guys are contracted by the state. They do a lot of clearing from them. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, they have flail mowers on tractors, yes, but this, the, the, the brono head can actually mulch.
Yep. Yeah, I know, I've seen them work.
Yeah, um, I had a lot of these questions. I, I think we need a combination of all three, but
We need everything pushed back.
Yeah.
But wouldn't it be most efficient to have somebody with a large tractor with a flail mower on an arm and not either of these proposals?
The flail mower's on a rubber tracked excavator.
Oh, that wasn't in the pictures. The pictures were
The rubber
Steel track.
Yeah, the rubber, no, his ex, one, one of them had a rubber tracked excavator, the smaller one, the flail mower.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, they could run that on asphalt.
Okay. Seems like the bits we've gotten just don't, they don't have a tractor and equipment, so these are the two bits that we're looking at. This is the equipment they have, right?
Correct.
And, just a quick, just a quick question and sorry if I didn't catch it, but is it the same, is the thousand dollars a day, that's for each piece of equipment?
No, the thousand dollars a day is for the flail mower. It's a smaller excavator. And the brono head is twenty-five hundred dollars a day, um, and that's a larger excavator. And we pretty much keep that on the dirt roads.
Did they say how many days work this is?
So I just took what they were charging and if we had them just bring one, the flail mower would be nineteen days. And
And at about one point five miles a day.
I think they could go a little faster than that.
With a tractor, they could.
Yeah, a tractor they could.
See, this is why, I'm wondering if we should accept either of these.
Well, then we won't get any clearing then.
For this year.
For this year.
I know, I'm just a little
And there's places that we need it. Ward Hill is, is pretty bad.
Yeah, there are a lot of places we need. Center Road has
Our, our budget's twenty grand for this year?
Yes, yep.
Can we, can we start by, I mean, it seems like they're fairly flexible. Can we just start with ten grand? With the flail, with one of the flail machines for however many days it takes and then if somebody, I mean, that's potentially more than ten miles, which is fairly significant.
I, I can't be, I mean, he wasn't that clear about mileage, cause I asked that specific question. He didn't, he said maybe one, one and a half miles a day. So I don't know if mileage is a good way to, to track this. I mean, we can, we can definitely have him come use the flail mower for a week.
Danny said, "Don't take either of them."
Yeah.
But I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we, cause technically we have a full year, but we're running out of time this year to do, to do it in terms of the season. If we did say, I don't know, twenty-five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars worth of, worth of cutting in like the worst places, and then we do another bid in the spring with that fifteen, with, with whatever's left, and maybe we can get a better bid. I just think we, we need something. So I don't know if there's a way to have a compromise and do a little bit now and then the rest later.
I don't know, I don't know, Kaylee, I don't know if we spent half of it, if anybody would actually bid during the spring anyways. Because I don't think it's gonna be worth their time to just ten thousand dollars to come up and
The spring is not when we wanna do it because there's no leaves on the trees and the branches aren't hanging down into the, the road. Right now is the best time to do it before the leaves start falling.
Would it be possible to kick this out till our next meeting?
It would.
I would like to do that.
Okay, yeah.
If we're, if we're gonna do that, should we put another bid out so we can potentially get more bids, or is this still open for people to bid?
No, it's closed.
So should we just reopen it?
And Tom's saying, Tom's saying it wouldn't, like, we got, Tom's saying it wouldn't matter, that we, we probably have who wanted to bid on it.
Yeah.
And then
So the one higher we take, to the next meeting, if we
Yeah, so there's an eight hundred dollar demobilization and demobilization too, and that's for both machines, if they brought the flail mower and the brono.
It's four hundred dollars each.
Yeah, no, no, it's four hundred dollars and they can fit, yeah. So it's four hundred dollars no matter what they bring, but they can bring both pieces for that. And then demobilization is another four hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Kaylee, did you catch that?
Well, it sounded
Yeah, so basically having
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so having them come for a smaller amount of time burns an extra eight hundred bucks.
So if, if they brought both of them, how many days is that? Instead of
That would be five, that'd be a week.
It's five days.
Five days, yeah.
But I question whether we need the, the, the larger excavator with the forestry mulcher thing. I mean, I've seen people use those to clear like acres of land where you're gonna change the, cause it can grind the stumps and everything.
Right.
Doesn't seem like what we're after necessarily. Unless it, I mean, can it be
Yeah, I agree with Eric. I think it'll also burn up
That we need the flail mower and not the brono?
I didn't catch that. I didn't hear what, can you repeat that, Kaylee?
No, I, I was just agreeing with Eric. I think that the price tag on that is significantly more and would burn up our budget and I'm not sure if we need it. The flail, the flail is really what we need.
I think. Although, I would defer to people who know more, but Everyone's looking at you, Tom.
The flail's gonna make a hell of a mess.
Yep.
No matter what you do.
Yep.
It's gonna be shredded. It's not gonna be able to get everything down to the ground. I mean, you're gonna end up with stuff hanging up. That's, you know, that's why, you know, you're, you're, you're kinda pushing that someone, you know, like Adam or somebody would just go and just click up, just go. You know, because we were, we, we also put in the bid, you know, like, you know, dangerous trees and stuff, you know, trees that were dead. Something that they could, you know, with a bucket truck, get up there, cut down and then get rid of, rid of stuff as they were going. But as you can see, not many, not many people bid, but
I thi- I think that we could utilize a, a tree trimming service after we get the roads pushed back.
You mean, just get the branches?
Yeah, they're, the branches are incorrect, like, you have to drive down the middle of the road in some places.
Yeah.
And this would be, I think this is the most efficient way to do that. I understand what you're saying. Um, and my concern with the brono and the flail is the mess. And I had a long conversation with Kyle Bellavance and they can change the teeth on the brono head to be a finer, um, chip. And I told him that I didn't wanna see, you know, the, the stump flowers, like stump and then it all, it's all shredded and they can bring those right down to the ground. It's just, it's, it's the, the operator of the equipment and how much time they take.
Right.
Um, they don't do this a lot in, for municipalities. They do it a lot for the state on the interstate. Um, he sent me a couple of videos and it's something that they're, they have the specialized equipment. It's something that they wanna get into. So, you know, there's that.
So they have experience doing exactly this with this equipment?
Yeah, but they're not. They haven't gotten into municipal, municipalities. And they're, you know, I think they want an opportunity to do it.
What did you say? How did he respond when you expressed concern about the mess this leads behind?
He, well, there's a, there's a door that they can put on the machine so the chips don't go all over the place. And if they just went slow and made sure they could just clean up. But the flail mower, like, if you push it up like this, it just
Sprays everywhere.
And, but the brono kinda mulches all that stuff.
Right. We had flail, we did have somebody with, we have had some flail mower pushed back in recent years.
That's what Woodbury has, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So they have something on their
They have something on their bucket loader.
I can't even imagine. I didn't see it, so
Well, it's like it's big own motor in the front and stuff with its own arm and everything else.
So the bucket, you drop off the bucket?
Yep.
Okay.
Just like our loader over there, we can drop the buckets off and then hook up to the forest.
Yeah.
Uh, same idea. They got a big machine that they go right, right into it and, and that's what they use.
So you'd have to drive straight into the side of the road?
No, 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 it's on an arm.
Oh, okay.
It, it just that, you know, you go, go down the side of the road with it. We, we heard that, I don't know, it's awful tippy, tippy. You know, with the loader because of being so heavy. Uh, basically you gotta keep, keep the, the thing down as low as you can to the ground. Cause if you start picking it up and it start going on a side hill like, like, like this with the loader, of course, you got that arm well, and the loader starts to tip.
Right.
But I ain't sure, I mean, you can ask them about it. I mean, they, they've been running theirs, so.
It seems like a loader is fairly stable, right?
A counterweight might be nice. I mean, tractors have counterweights.
They do, yeah, the tractors, when they have those mowers, have the counterweight on the other side.
Did Danny have alternatives?
How much, if this
He wanted to research alternatives next week, he said.
And if we're, we're gonna talk about this in our next meeting, can we talk about how much it would cost to buy one of those and if that made sense?
Yeah.
As a potential alternative?
I mean, we could. And the thing is that we don't currently own a tractor that would be appropriate, correct?
Correct.
We could put it on a loader, but Tom's just saying that the way, the setup that he's aware of on a loader is a little, um, unbalanced sometimes if you're, if you're too far extended. So
Maybe John Deere will throw in one when we
Oh, yeah, when we, when we spend a million dollars with John Deere and he will throw one in.
Well, you know how, how we've been talking about a roller for the back of the grader and stuff?
Yeah.
Uh, those are like thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for the back of the grader, so.
Yeah. But rolling's a good idea.
It, it, it is.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna push this to next time?
Is it okay to push it to next time?
Yes.
All right.
No.
Well, then that way Well, I mean, if you said, all these options go away, if you don't make a decision tonight, then we, that'd be different. But if we don't know that they go away, let's, let's say we're pushing it out.
I mean, there's internet in Tennessee.
I know, we had some evening meeting apparently.
Well, I can get, I can talk to Woodbury about theirs.
You can do a little research on that next week.
See what they think about theirs and, you know, and see if it is really tip, tip, tip and stuff.
You should have them bring it down here and demonstrate it on ten or twenty miles of our road.
How often does this need to be done?
Every year, every year.
I mean, we could be busy for the next ten years.
And then when we were done, we'd have to go, start again.
Or buy a new, yeah, or buy a piece of
Well, well, see, once you get done and get stuff pushed back, you could actually go in there roadside mowing instead of like we're doing for one pass. We can say, "Okay, we want three passes done on each road." And then it can be maintained.
Cause then you're keeping stuff down.
Right, because the initial cost right now is trying to get everything pushed back where it belongs. Then afterwards, it's just maintaining. That's when you go out to roadside mow and get contracts done, say, "Okay, we're gonna do three passes instead of just, you know, a five-foot swath."
Yeah.
Like, like we do, do now.
Is it worth, could we save money by buying our own equipment and doing it instead of hiring it done? Well, we don't have staff to do it, do we?
Yeah, we could put somebody in.
I'll do it.
There you go.
To me, it comes back to, is it
He can go ahead, he can mow the roadside and do controlling at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Slow, slow speed pursuit.
That's, that's a great
Just put a blue light on the tractor.
That's a great option to research for ne- for next time. If we're pushing the decision to next meeting,
Yeah.
why don't we ask the, the town manager's office to pull that together and then we can talk about it in our next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think the big challenge there is that
We're not gonna get it today.
Ideally, we would own a tractor to drive that, which would be a big, bigger, heavier tractor than we have. Unless it turns out that the buckle, there are buckle loader options that are reasonable.
I like, I think if we invest in a piece of equipment to do it, we should just buy a head for the, our new excavator.
Or, or that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that doesn't solve this year's problem?
No.
None of it does, but
We're gonna table that for next week.
Okay.
Cause Danny's gonna come back with a great idea.
All right, so moving along, next is item two, select board to, um, approve Balsam Ridge Road as a new addition to the roads. And this is a private road, I believe, right off of Sender Road. That's where there's a proposal for development, right?
Yes.
And, um, and we have to, they have to be named for emergency response nine-one-one reasons.
Yes.
And this is the name that the owners or whoever propose, so
Motion to approve Balsam Ridge Road as a new addition to the roads. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next is item three, select board to discuss forming a committee for water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-three. This is such an exciting thing every time.
And we should schedule a meeting for the thirtieth or the thirty-first.
Oh, okay, which is two, almost two weeks.
Tuesday or Wednesday, two weeks.
So
I'd be happy to serve on this again. Tuesday works the best for me. It's that, it works for everybody.
Tuesday, the thirtieth.
And I can work on it too.
Okay.
Um, Tuesday, the thir- will you send out an invite?
I will, yes.
You will?
And I will do a dudel poll to see what time works best.
Okay. Great.
And do we want anybody from the public?
Could have. Do we have people, do you have somebody you can reach out to?
I have somebody in mind that I could reach out to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
See if he's available.
Sounds great. Last year, I think Kenny also joined this.
Sorry, say again, Kaylee?
Last year Kenny joined this too, right?
Kenny, yeah.
Yeah, he'll be there.
Awesome.
The Progressive Party has a
Hi, Nancy, could you state your name?
I'm Nancy Kellogg and I thought I had missed everything, but this is exactly what I'm here for. Uh, the Progressive Party has part of the platform, um, water issues. Since this drought is probably not a passing event and, um, most people don't understand, I mean, I've copied some things off of the internet about how the system is, how the water is metered or not metered and, um, I found one thing on the internet that said Vermont had the lowest water bills in the country and it said eighteen dollars. And I didn't know if it was eighteen dollars a month, a day, a week, a quarter, you know, but it's different everywhere and, um, that's why I don't, I, the public does not have a clue of how it's metered, how it's sold and, and how it's conserved, you know, um.
So, so just to, just broadly, we have, uh, we bill quarterly for water and sewer in the, in the village that's served by it. The East Hardwick has a water system that's separate. I'm not sure how that's billed, um,
Biannually.
Biannually, okay. So that's different setup and it's not metered in East Hardwick. In Hardwick Village, almost everyone now has meters, so it's metered and every quarter there, there's an allotted usage there, there's an allotted usage that's included in a base rate. If you exceed that usage in a quarter, then you pay per gallon for your overage. And our meeting that we're scheduling is a meeting to discuss the, you know, adjusting the rates for the coming year to meet our expenses.
And the rates are adjusted just to meet the expenses?
Every year. So we have.
The expenses of.
The water system.
Running the water system.
So it's different for, um, commercial restaurants, apartments, you know, et cetera?
Yeah. Yep. And, um, yep, so we just to try to adjust the, I mean, really the focus is on equitable distribution of the cost and, you know, and also a predictable amount of revenue for the water system such that the water system is, continues to be there for everyone.
So what is the average allotment for, say, a single family house? Say, no, on the.
I think it's eight thousand gallons a quarter is included in the base rate.
And I've started this first month, August was the first month for, um, conservation practices. August is the first month that, um, I started reading the meters monthly. So if somebody has a leak, we can pick up on that and we could contact them.
Oh, that's good. So instead of quarterly, you'd be ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
And what does a pool hold?
Depends on what size.
Well, what's the, the range? Thousands of gallons?
An Olympic swimming pool holds a hundred and fifty thousand gallons.
Oh.
And, uh, sixteen foot pool, or sixteen to twenty foot round pool holds about eight to ten thousand gallons.
But the people who fill them pay for that?
Correct.
That's aside from the.
No, it goes through their meter.
It goes through the meter?
Yeah, so they'll pay an overage.
Unless they get water elsewhere somehow trucked in.
Right.
Is there any incentive for using less than the basic amount?
Paying less.
But I, but if it's not metered above.
It is metered.
Yeah, but, but there's, no, but the point is, you're right, that the, the base, there's not really incentive to use less than the base rate.
Right, right, right.
Currently.
But the base rate is what we base our rate on for both water and sewer to like cover the cost of business. Yeah.
So this is a discussion every year. So it's changed a little bit. It used to be ten thousand gallons a quarter and the base rate now is eight thousand.
And we didn't have metering, we didn't have metering before.
That's true. We used to just be flat rate.
We used to have a flat rate and everybody could use as much as they could use in that period and have that flat rate. So the meters encourage conservation.
And they've really helped us in our system because they've helped us isolate leaks faster, right? So it turns out, which is something.
So are all of these meters hooked up to a panel like?
No, they're all independent. You have to drive around and.
Oh.
It's not that owners. I don't have to do it.
Takes, takes about four hours.
Pardon?
Takes about four hours.
You can read them from outside. They don't have to go inside.
Oh.
Just drop her out.
Anyway.
And, and stand near it and read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm gonna move us along. Uh, so next item is item four, select board to make a formal resolution for forming the Cannabis Control Commission. So this is, we, I believe last time we asked David Upson to go away and come back with a, one we could just adopt and this is it, right?
This is it?
So I thought it looked good. Um, anybody have any? Kaylee, you still with us?
It says she is.
Yep, I was still here.
Good. We can't see you, so, you know, I have to ask sometimes. So, um.
Want a motion to adopt this?
Yeah, I'd be good with a motion to adopt it.
I move that we adopt this resolution for a local cannabis control commission.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is any, uh, what about discussion? Anybody have any, anything on it?
Do we have people that are already interested in serving or is this the next step? We have to post it for people?
Well, we'll go search out those folks.
Okay.
Appoint them.
So it is now when we talk about.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, there are a couple of folks that I was gonna send your way, Opie, who are potentially interested, so I'll even.
Good work, Kaylee.
So it's now when we talk about the other, like folding the other in to this?
We could, if we.
So this resolution is required by the state so they know to forward retail cannabis licenses to us.
This is the important step.
This is the important step. From here, we could adopt, uh, we could probably do another resolution to adopt an all encompassing, I, I don't know the name, substance.
Right, we could have a name for it.
Substance co- commission and adopt that, that this bo- this commission, or it could be the select board, um, would take on the tobacco, cannabis and alcohol licenses.
Yep. So, right, so.
But first we have to adopt this.
First, let's, so we have a motion in a second to adopt this as written. Do we have any questions about the resolution or comments or are we good with it?
I'm good with it.
Me too.
Sure. Call the question.
Sherry's a little lukewarm. All right, all in favor of adopting the resolution for local cannabis control commission as written, please say aye.
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 And that's everyone. So motion carries. Thank you. I think this is an important step because the states are like ready to roll out licenses and we wouldn't have any control, we wouldn't have any control without it.
Right.
This is the original.
So that's great. And then, so the possibility of adding on the others.
I'll look into that.
You'll look into it. Awesome. And bring it back.
I talked to Allison Link from Healthy Lamo Valley and she said she'd give me a hand with this.
And I'm also curious, just like the legal.
Right.
Side of that, right? Cause I don't remember how it's designated in statute.
Governing body.
But can, is it, is it okay for the governing body to appoint people to, to do like the liquor licenses?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Or their designee, I think that's what it's called.
Does it say?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Kaylee, we're missing your signature on all this stuff. We can't quite reach you. Poor Danny.
I'm gonna go, I guess, talk to you after tomorrow, tomorrow anyway, so I can sign, I can sign tomorrow, I mean.
Cool. And, uh, yeah, you just need a long arm that reaches through the internet. And Danny too.
I'm really glad that that does not exist.
Yeah, that's true.
Give it a couple of years.
Yeah, exactly. Give it time. Um, all right, so great. We've got the Cannabis Control Commission. At least we've got the resolution forming it. We'll.
Framework is in place.
Framework is in place. We need to appoint people to it and David's gonna look into, um, whether we can consolidate that into a liquor, alcohol, cannabis, all in one kinda deal. Um, all right, so item five, uh, is select board to authorize the town manager to sign a letter of support for a capital improvements program grant to the Center for Agricultural Economy. So this, this is a grant that, um, it's available through the state of Vermont. Um, the Center for Agricultural Economy is applying for, I think it's half a million dollars. And so originally the, um, the Yellow Barn Project had given a proposal to this group for funding it and it was gonna come to the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, which is the nonprofit that's gonna operate the Yellow Barn when it's built. The folks administering the CIP program didn't think that that was appropriate for some reason. That's still unclear to me. But as an alternative, they proposed that the CAE apply for this money. So, um, Allison Lowe from NVDA is working with John Ramsey from CAE to put this grant together. They're getting a letter of support from the town before our next meeting, but it's not written yet. So, and the money, um, for the five hundred thousand is gonna go to the CAE, but then is going to be used to help build the, the shell of the new business accelerator building that's gonna be built next to the barn.
I move that we authorize the town manager to sign this letter of support to the CAE's grant application.
Thank you.
Second?
Any questions heard?
Is this gonna be the last thing?
Isn't really a question to air?
Yeah.
Is this, is the, is this the only way that the CAE is financially tied to the Yellow Barn project? Or there are other grants that they are?
Yeah, so they're gonna be one of, uh, three main tenants. So it's gonna be CAE, um, Jasper Hill Farm and Cabot Cooperative Creamery are gonna be the three, eight, three tenants. Um, CAE is gonna also be investing some more money into the project and they're gonna be investing money into their own fit up inside the, the newly built space. So they're gonna be into it for a fair amount. I don't remember the exact number. Does that answer the question?
Maybe.
East Hardwick, get her net.
Love this.
Hello, East Hardwick?
She's on mute.
I know, but she, she's always on mute when she's listening, which is good practice.
Well, yeah, it gets her more bandwidth, I guess.
Right. I'm gonna assume that answered the question.
Yeah.
I think she's good with it.
Okay.
She's calling Mike.
Yeah, she's calling Mike. All in favor of, uh, authorizing town managers to sign a letter of support for CAE, for the CIP grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that's three of us and motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, any select board reports?
So, um, I do, I think I have a little bit of good news. I heard from Andrea today that she heard from John Davis, who is Evernorth, who is, used to be Vermont Housing, blah, 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 BMS Block Repairs, that, um, they believe that the Galaxy will be able to reopen early November.
Oh, great.
So that's better news than we had heard last week where we thought it was gonna be the first of the year. So.
Does it put Scale House in that same?
Well, nobody's heard, I haven't heard a thing from the Scale House and there's been zero activity over there, so I really don't know.
Okay.
Um, it would be great if someone from the Scale House could.
Call Sherry Cornish.
Let, let, let me know. Uh, you know, people are asking and like the musician guy who was performing there, it comes in about once a week and like asks us where they are and how, you know, anyway.
So it's great that building's getting, and then upstairs.
Early November, so the Galaxy will be back open before the holidays, which is great for downtown and for them and all that stuff. So that was good. Um, the townhouse tonight is the final, uh, concert for the chamber players.
Wow.
We have quite a few things coming in the fall. There's, there's a few things happening. There's a proj- there's a screening of, um, ACTV is doing a screening on the twenty-eighth. Help me, help me.
I wasn't prepared to speak, sorry.
Yeah.
Of a movie?
Up there, no, up there, um, uh, I got it here. I got it.
The Creator's Fun Project.
Right.
For local, um, media makers, created videos.
So it'll be, uh, all four, so of the grantees. So it's Rip Keller from Walden. It's Meredith Holtz from East Hardwick. It's Roy McNeil from Greensboro and our own Elizabeth Rizzano, who's right here with us.
Wow.
So, um, that's gonna be a great thing at the townhouse on the twenty-eighth of September. Then there's a couple of Blackfly Story Hours coming along. Um, you'll start to see some information about that. Um, I will bring it to the next meeting when we have everybody here, but, and I'll chat with Opie about it, but we have someone who wants to rent the townhouse for a wedding. On the, which is to be a private event, but it's on the first weekend in November. So it's outside of our lease, so we would need to have select board approval to continue, even though usually it doesn't set, gets shut down right away anyway, so it all, it always seems to depend on hunting season when it gets shut down. So if we can make some sort of a, um, amendment to our lease, we might need to do that. But we can officially do that at some later point. Um, I don't know when hunting season is, so whatever.
Second Saturday in November.
Yeah, so.
It starts October.
Well, that's, that's.
And goes through December.
Our plumber goes to the years, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's a conversation with the plumber that I don't have, so.
So.
Yeah.
What about, do we have updates generally about the, like, the project?
The capital campaign and the project. Um, we do, we have some good news that we can't announce until something happens with the governor's office. Um, and then we also have, um, uh, we had a meeting with the engineer. Tom was able to be there and we had some revelations, but, uh, don't, doesn't seem like there's gonna be any problem that really is gonna affect anything
Okay.
in a big way. Yeah.
Great.
We just have to move the entire townhouse over.
Yeah, a little left.
Yeah, and, um, some of the work, the, the removal of the old fire escapes is gonna happen this fall.
Oh, nice.
Um, yeah, uh, some of the funding, the, the final funding that we wanna go for, we wanna have some of those little things cleaned up before we do that so that they can do their environmental review thing and, you know, how those things go. So anyway, yeah, that's all I got right now for select board reports.
Okay.
Well, I will say, as we're talking about townhouse activities, that the Historical Society is going to be hosting a gentleman from Maine, um, named Ron Romano, talking about tombstones and how they made, are made and what they tell us about various era. And he's particularly interested in the tombstones that are created that are, that look like billboards. If you think of the sign that announces Hazen Union, that, um, big granite sign on two legs, it turns out that there are tombstones that are made like that and that is his particular interest. And it turns out that Hardwick has an, a way above average number of them in our cemeteries. So it's a Monday, I think it's the second, I wasn't prepared to do this. I think it's the second Monday in September, but, um, tune in next time and I will have an absolute date for you and it'll be in the paper.
Huh, interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Kaylee was, uh, about to say something too, I think. You have a report?
Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned, if anybody mentioned this, um, cause I cut out really quickly. I just wanted to mention, um, uh, well, I guess it's old business, but also a report, but we met to talk about the Kerry Road Project, Danny, Opie, Krista and I. And, um, basically we're gonna start with a survey of the property, um, and then to really delineate where the wetlands are and then move forward from, from there. We didn't really, uh, we decided that was a good first step. Then we'll have a conversation about development or selling of that property or keeping of that property after we do a survey. Um, so that was one report. And they also wanted to mention that the equity committee is having a, um, our committee retreat is this Saturday, um, which we're really excited about. And so we've got a lot of things that we're gonna be talking about there and we're looking forward to bringing some more, uh, information and different ideas to the select board soon. Um, I think that was it. The only other question I had, and this is for old business, I don't wanna get cut out, is, um, Sherry mentioned her last meeting, having, uh, um, potentially having a select board retreat, uh, in October. I was wondering if there are any, was any other thoughts?
Yep. Uh, we should still plan, uh, yeah, we'll, we should do it.
Yeah.
Keep, keep reminding us.
We're supposed to think about that.
Maybe Amanda or Casey could send out a, maybe we could start with a doodle poll for October?
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds good. All right, um, I'll try to.
I did have one new business thing. Tell me when I should do it.
I just have a Yellow Barn report. You, you wanna go first or you want me to?
That's a select board report. You do it.
So I'll try to be brief for the Yellow Barn. It's gone through a redesign process to try to. It's gone through a redesign process to try to bring the project within the existing budget. The redesign had to go back before the existing funders to make sure they were still on board with the redesigned project. The only funder that we're currently waiting on is EDA, and they were supposed to be considering it today, and we don't know when, we'll hear, so.
What does EDA stand for?
Economic Development Authority.
Association, right?
Something with an A.
Then it's authority.
It's a federal agency, and our nearest district office is in Philadelphia. And so it's a little bit, our communication with them is not the same. All the other funders, even the federal ones, have a presence in Vermont, so there's somebody in Montpelier or somewhere you can call. I mean, we have people in Philadelphia we can call, it's just a little different. The response is, time is different, and their understanding of...
Administration.
Administration, thank you. Yeah, their understanding of our particular region, you know, is better than the state folks are. Anyway, we're waiting to hear. The plan is still to try to get a shovel in the ground before the end of this year.
Hooray.
I, well, let's hold the hooray until we see the shovel. Okay, so, new business, old business?
So for new business, and Opey knows a little about this, there's been a discussion about creating a, sort of, a focus group for the LVRT, there's some...
Within Hardwick.
Within Hardwick, so our trailheads, and I know that all three of us are willing to serve on that group. I don't know how complicated that gets, if there's three of us, and since Wiz and I are sort of involved in the trailhead here, we really, I'm giving you an out if you wanna bail on this, just saying. So the purpose of this group would be to, and then Tracy and you, and I can't remember who else.
Helen.
Helen Beatty, because she's been involved with, pretty well involved with the East Hardwick Trailhead over there.
And with our board grant.
Yeah, and the board grant, and we just wanna try to have a few, you know, sessions where we really get, like, consistent signage and talk about what amenities there could be if we got some grant money, how we would organize that thing. So, and parking, and delineating parking, and stuff like that, so.
And there is grant money available, that's been announced, and the management plan is out there.
The management plan finally came out.
Only one hundred and thirty-four pages or something like that, easy reading.
But it's in the public comment phase, so people should read it, and if they have any comments, they should comment.
But there are lots of pictures.
There are, that's true, lots of pictures, but still, I'm not all the way through it, are you?
Anyway, I'm not all the way through it, but, so that's gonna come together, and just thought I would say that.
And the work on the trail has been pretty astounding recently. Tom was saying they were, they were laying top course with a paver, right, like a paving machine?
In the way, well, they got a paver set over here at the health center right now.
Yeah, they started again this week, yeah.
So I know Lafayette are putting up wooden guardrails out through right now. Because I think they're over by Pumpkin Lane today, doing next to the river over there.
Oh, yeah. That is a little steep, that area that was repaired a bunch of years ago? Looks like if you start rolling down that...
The state started on Route sixteen to Percy's, where it's, we're about to lose Route sixteen into the...
Into the river?
Yeah, they started on that project.
And they have a, I noticed they looked like they were setting up the detour, kind of setting the road over or something, or is that not right?
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Okay. But they're working on it, okay.
I know they're re, bank stabilization and then re, something in the river, redoing the river channel.
Really?
Yeah, straight, doing something to the river, realigning it, some fancy term.
Yeah, they usually don't want us anywhere near the river.
No.
Oh, thinking of roads and stuff like, paving downtown, looked like they got the concrete poured for those bumpouts. So the one that uphill most, I guess across from the diner, the curbing looks super low.
It's because it's gonna be level.
It's gonna be level.
With the road.
They're all gonna be level with the road.
Except for the one at Tracy's, the two at Tracy's.
Okay, so it's gonna be level with the road.
Well, me and Opey met with the engineers and stuff down there, what they were gonna do was leave a one-foot gap between the sidewalk and that curb, and if we were to raise, raise it up for drainage.
Okay.
Because the catch basins were on the downhill side.
Yeah.
So you're creating a one-foot trip hazard.
That's, that's happening.
I see that on that other one, I don't know why.
Because they didn't wanna core through the concrete, it's too thick, put the catch basin in it. You weren't on that either?
No.
Okay, so that's why, but that, that's still gonna be clearly not a place to park.
Well...
That's, that's just got a seven-inch curb.
No, no, the one up at the diner.
Oh, the raised, or the flush, the flush bumpouts?
Yeah.
It'll have a different texture.
We, yeah, they're stamped, they're still gonna be stamped.
Okay.
And the lines will be, the parking lines will be done up permanent, but we didn't raise them because of snow removal.
Right.
If you kept those there, the landings for the crosswalks would be full of snow.
Right.
Well, they'll, yeah, they tend to be anyway, but we're gonna do a better job.
They'd be even more full of snow.
And the one by the co-op that doesn't have any, isn't gonna even have a stamp thing, so people will still park right across that crosswalk, is my guess, but we'll see, see how it goes.
Where the co-op used to be.
Everything's such a...
Well, it's still in construction mode.
Yeah, it's like...
Once it's all finalized...
It's a free-for-all right now, anyway, so.
We'll be doing some parking enforcement.
Yeah.
All right, you heard it here first, there will be parking enforcement.
Yeah, we're ready.
We're gonna deputize somebody on the Select Board.
No, somebody's not gonna do it.
All right, I like that idea.
I don't, yeah, I don't need to lose customers to parking enforcement.
I thought you was talking about Wiz.
Just don't, just don't take care of your customers.
All right. All, last call.
Motion to abort, uh, what?
I'm gonna adjourn, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone. Don't listen to Sherry.
Motion for what?
Thanks, Kaylee, if you want to abort the mission.
Motion to abort.